Good morning. I now call the September 4th, 2025 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 AM. At this time, we're going to go into a brief recess for an attorney-client session. The regular work session will resume immediately after the attorney-client session, so I will call a recess at 9:01 AM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning and welcome back to the September 4th Administrative Briefing and Work Session. We are returning from recess at 9:32. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. Measuring and modeling how our students begin each day, I ask that you please pause with us for a moment of silence. Please join me. Thank you. I'll now read our Board Commitment Statement. "We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we work together, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success." I'd like to ask the School Board Attorney to explain the rules for the public workshop. Good morning, Attorney Powers.
Good morning, and thank you. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniformed meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call the speaker's name in the order received. Each speaker will then have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules, and welcome.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Good morning, Ms. Martinez Young. Can you please provide the proof of publication?
Morning, Madam Chair. The notice for the September 4th, 2025 work session was published in the Ocala Gazette on August 22nd, 2025. Proof of publication has been attached to board docs under proof of publication.
Thank you. Good morning, Dr. Brewer. I think we're going to start off with item 4.1, renaming MTI.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Mr. Chad Frazier, the Area Superintendent at Marion Technical Institute, will come to the podium to introduce this topic today.
Good morning, Chair Conrad, Vice Chair Cummings, Board Members, and Interim Superintendent Dr. Brewer. It is my pleasure to provide with you the timeline and the results from the surveys and committee meetings for the renaming of Marion Technical Institute. I'd like to start off and introduce Mr. Ronnie Jones, which is our principal here at Marion Technical Institute. He'll be available as well as I at the end of this presentation to answer any questions you may have. So Marion Technical Institute opened in 2005 as a vocational high school, providing students with hands-on, career-focused education. The school operated as a technical high school on the site that previously housed Forest High School until 2016, when it transitioned into an alternative learning site to support students requiring additional assistance. Between 2017 and 2018, MTI continued serving Marion County students as a vocational high school while also introducing the 8.5 Fast Track program, which combined vocational opportunities with core academic instruction. In 2019 and 2020 school year, MTI expanded its role by incorporating the Francis Marion Military Program. The school also became home to the Work Study Program designed for students with disabilities who have deferred their diploma. And by 2022, MTI concluded its final year of hosting full-time students enrolled in both vocational and academic coursework on campus. In 2023, and continuing into the current school year, MTI refined its mission to directly support students with non-aggregious behavior concerns. During this period, the institute also serves students from New Leaf, from the Silver River Mentoring Institute, and our past programs, further strengthening its role as a specialized alternative education center. The Marion Technical Institute renaming committee comprised of community members, parents, educators, and has completed its work and is prepared to present its recommendation to the School Board. Survey 1 was conducted from June 25th through August 3rd of 2025, and yielded 93 responses, generating more than 140 unique name submissions. Following this progress, the committee met to review all submissions and narrowed the list to eight names for inclusion in Survey 2. Survey 2 generated 148 responses from students, parents, and stakeholders throughout Marion County. After careful review of these results, the committee reconvened to identify the top three names, which are being formally presented to the Board this morning. Both surveys were made available on the MCPS website and the MTI school website. In addition, Sky Alerts and email notifications were sent to ensure all stakeholders had the opportunity to participate in the process. The breakdown of the respondents was as follows. 15.9% were parents, 50% were MCS- MCPS employees, 20.5% were community members, and 8.3% were students. The final results of Survey 2 were Bridgeway Academy at 29.7%, New Path Academy at 14.5%, and Level Up Academy at 13.8%. The naming committee reviewed the Survey 2 results and ranked their personal choices 1 to 5. After tallying the results, their recommendation was exactly the same as Survey 2's. Please have discussions about the name choices, and let me know if the Board comes to consensus on a new name for Marion Tech Coin Institute. The final choice will be placed on the Board Agenda on September 23rd for the Board's vote on the school name.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Yes, Dr. Brewer, do you have something you want to add? Trying to read who's leaning forward and see who wants to speak. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Jones. Thank you for joining us this morning. We're sure glad to have you here. Board, I open it up for any questions or concerns? Anybody? Okay. Go ahead.
I don't think you're going to have any issue from any of us on this. I think Bridgeway Academy is very appropriate because of what the mission is for the school. So you won't get anything from me on that. I love Bridgeway Academy, so.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Ms. Rowan.
It's very clear that this is the naming committee's recommendation, and I think I'm pretty confident that Monsieur Principal Jones agrees. Well, I know how I'm going to vote. So be it.
Dr. James.
I just think this is the direction we want to go. It sounds fine to me. I'm not opposed to the name at all. And I think that Mr. Jones and I chatted briefly, and just starting the school year with a strong foundation has already created even more success. I've actually had people in the community tell me they were thankful for their time in an alternative setting, because it was a good reset, it was a good, they learned behavior. I had a parent share with me, it was actually a parent who came before the Board, and I see her child outside of here now. And I said, "How was the time at MTI?" And she's like, "It couldn't have been better." It was the best thing for her because it was the reset she needed, and she learned coping strategies. Like, we need to get her on video, you know? Because it was, but it was so nice to hear, because in our former setup, prior to taking this on internally, that was not what we were hearing. And so to see truly that there is impact in the work we're doing in restructuring children to make them the best possible citizens for our community is really powerful. And so the work we're doing is great. If this is the name we want, that sounds awesome to me, too.
And Madam Chair, just to add, when I hear the name Bridgeway Academy, I know what Mr. Jones is doing here. I know what the community says, talks about. When you talk about alternative placement, there's a new component to alternative placement now that was not there. And it's a four-letter word, H-O-P-E, that they didn't have before. So I appreciate that for this.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell.
I appreciate it as well. I just love that there is a nod to understanding that this is a bridge and that it goes both ways. So that's my favorite part of this name, because it also ensures that those base schools understand those students are coming back across the bridge. And so I think that's important. The other names were fine, but this is the one I thought was best anyway. So I'm grateful that the committee agreed to, just because of the nature of what the concept of a bridge is. So I'm good with it, too.
Thank you, Board. I, too, am in support of the name, but I do have a couple of questions. When we rename a school, what does it cost us? Like, between a sign and, like, what does it cost us? A ballpark figure, I'm not looking for an exact number, but, like, so in my mind and my non-construction brain, you know? So we get a new sign, you know, new logo, those kinds of.
There has to be a whole rebranding of this.
Yes.
I'm sure that there has to be some type of budget for rebranding.
Well, we can go back to Fordham as an example. If we were looking for follow-up data, Chair, it might be helpful to just send the information that it costs to brand Fordham, because we did that in the last two years or so.
So we can, Ms. Conrad, we can certainly look into that and get back to you. I know Mr. Jones and I have had that conversation about rebranding and what that would look like. The marquee out front is a MCPS marquee, so that could stay the same. But actual branding around the school is going to be something that we're going to have to look at a funding source for. But I can definitely get that information and get back to the Board about how much it's going to approximately cost.
All right. I appreciate that, because we love the work that's going on at this facility, and we know the facility is not the reason for the success. It's the people and the work that's going on. But we also know that this facility has its challenges. And so that comes up a lot when we're talking about our future plans. And so when we're rebranding and we're spending some money renaming the school, are those, you know, are any of them things if the school is located at a different place? Will, are those things, can they go with them? You know, if it's a sign, if it, you know, whatever that is. So I'd just like a little more info in the cost and how much of that cost we can use. You know, we don't have to redo if we're at a different location.
Transferable cost, though, since I can move with it. Mr. Jones, you know, I just want you to make sure you have a strong mascot. Bright colors.
Oh, my gosh. Purple, right?
Right.
I'm so glad you already know.
Oh, we already know.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
Same as plug, same as plug.
Anything else from the Board? Okay. I think you have consensus, Mr. Frazier. Thank you for being here this morning. Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our next item. Dr. Brewer, we're going to move into our five-year capital plan.
Yes, thank you. I'll ask Ms. Usher to come to the podium to begin the presentation, and she does have Ms. Yvonne Boombach with her today to assist.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Brewer. Good morning, Chair Conrad, Board Members. Every year, the School Board is required to review and approve an education facilities plan. Right there. This plan should include the first year is the capital budget. Then the other five years is a capital improvement program. And the capital improvement program, it's based on our needs and the projected revenue. So that's why every year we come back and we amend it. So actually, you're only looking at, when we bring it to you in September in approving the capital outlay budget for the one year. The statutes 1013 also states that we need to do projections for five, 10, and 20 years and identify how space is being used. We keep our space updated every annually with the Florida Inventory of School Houses, and we submit this information to DOE in April. It also needs to show all the planned new capacity projects or any type of closures or consolidations or any major change to a facility. A list of major repairs and renovation and date on our relocatables and how they're used. And typically, this plan is submitted to DOE around October. It is on your September 2030, Board, currently tentatively scheduled. This year, we say we're in a transition year because we did introduce a number of new revenue sources. In March 24, the Board of County Commissioners approved the reinstatement of the sales tax. It was sunsetted or discontinued in 2011, and they approved it at 40%. It was implemented July 1st, 2024. In November, the voters approved the half-cent sales tax for school construction, and this is for 10 years, valid until December 31st, 2034. The School Board also borrowed $329 million to fund six new projects. The two elementary schools that just opened, Winding Oaks and Ross Prairie, the high school that's under construction, the new Lake Ware Middle School replacement, Liberty Middle Edition, and the gymnasium at Oceola Park. The 1.5 mil remains the same. It was two about 18 years ago, then it went to 1.75, and now it's 1.5. The good thing is that this year, we received about $6 million more in mileage than last year, even though the mileage is still at 1.5, which that could increase. Okay, planning and transition here continues. Right now, we are just gathering information. JB Pro is our consultant working with us. They're conducting studies and analyzing data on housing projections, coming up with student generation rate by housing type, looking at student yield and absorption rate. This will help us with all short and long-term planning. It will show our projected needs for capacity, timing, where it's needed, and our overall. projection. We're also doing a comprehensive maintenance plan with Roth EMs, a consulting firm. They're doing a facility condition assessment of all of our buildings, infrastructure, and systems. They will keep this information live. It will help staff in prioritizing projects, looking at life safety first, and we have different criteria we look at in scheduling these priority projects and scheduling them for repair. This will help a lot because right now, it's done manually by the maintenance team and the facility staff, looking at the projects. Having this will kind of help us keep the information current and better plan for it. Staff is working on a planning study for the utilization of North County Elementary Schools as directed by the board. We have had several meetings and came up with different alternative concepts that we plan to present to you on October 16. And similarly, you directed staff to do a planning study for a five-year alternative school plan. So we're working on that also, and that will be presented on October 16 also. The, Mr. Erez Department did a study with, commissioned a study with Power School to look at our residential data right now. So currently, there are 100 active developments, projected and new single-family and multifamily homes is 3,400 annually. With the build-out trends, the K-12 enrollment growth is expected to range from 639 to 1,200, which equates to 4,100 to 4,800 students over the next five years. But their study really focused mainly on in-migration. There are a lot of other factors that affect this, school choice charter, vouchers, homeschooling. So hopefully, we'll be able to get more detailed information from JB Pro to help us with our projections. Projected revenue, under the mileage, the local capital improvement mileage, I mentioned we're getting $5 million more this year, which is 61.7 million. Impact fees, 8.9. Sales tax, 39.5 million. The pass-through, the district for charter school capital outlay is 627. Capital outlay and debt service, this is the monies that we get from the sale a license plate, and it's distributed to school district. It's not much, but it's 1.7 million. And we sold the warehouse property, so that was a one-time income of 1.9 million and the interest we make on our money. So the projected revenue for '25, '26 is 114 million, and we more or less carry that through throughout the five years. Impact fees. As I mentioned, the impact fees, they were approved in March 24, implemented July 2024 at 40%, and this is a breakdown of the cost. Total collection to date is 8.9 million. If we were at 100%, we would have gotten 22.4 million. Much difference. Okay, use of capital revenues for district support data. Please note that this is about 36% of our total capital budget. Mr. Ostanik, the supervisor of transportation is here, and so he'll talk about the first item, buses.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I feel like every time I come up here, where I'm asking for money, so forgive me for that, but I'm going to do it again because I'm passionate about our transportation department and Marion County Public Schools and our students. So just want to kind of give you a refresher because we did in February talk about where we were at with our bus fleet and kind of what our numbers were and some of those issues that we had with our buses kind of aging within the fleet. We have some warranties where a lot of the balloon purchase that we made for buses, those are coming out of warranty. And we also kind of talked about how we, you know, the vision is to get to where we can purchase, you know, 10% of our bus fleet a year. That way, every 10 years, we're rolling our fleet over. Excuse me. That way, we're rolling our fleet over and are able to keep within the kind of industry standard numbers of keeping our fleet between 10 and 12 years. No bus is older than that. And also trying to stay under that 250,000-mile mark for our buses. So that was just kind of a reminder for you guys, and I do appreciate whatever we can do that remains within budget. But I just wanted to remind everybody kind of where we stood. Currently, we have, you know, 249 routes, so that's 249 buses that are assigned to an actual route. We currently have 12 good spares that we have that we rotate through. And you think, okay, you know, it's not too bad, but then when you think of the number of buses we have to pull off a day to be able to do maintenance on and be able to do state inspections on and those kind of type of things, it's a tight, tight window that we have. And we also, the other reminder that I would give you guys is the amount that it's gone up to purchase a bus, where we talked about 15, 20 years ago, you could purchase one for $90,000. Now they're running about $165,000. So there's a, yes, we get more money, but you're purchasing basically the same amount of buses sometimes. So just some things to think about as you go through the decision-making process, and if you have any questions or anything I can answer, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Ostanik. I have one thing I'd just like you to clarify for the public. If you could share with us, when you were talking about the challenges we have with our warranties on our buses, could you share with us just facts that you've shared with the board about how many miles? We have 249 routes, but how many miles our buses do a day and why the warranty is such a challenge for us?
Okay. Just like a car warranty, you know, the manufacturer is going to, will up to a certain mileage number. Usually with buses, it's usually around 100,000 miles. They will help, you know, they will warranty the bus, if the motor, transmission, those kind of things. If it's out of warranty, then our department is responsible for fixing that. So the cost falls within for Marion County Public Schools and the Transportation Department to bear that cost. Mileage-wise, we are, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I think it's like 33,000 miles a day that we're running daily with our buses. Marion County is the size of Rhode Island. You know, I say that all the time, just so everyone can get a picture of the amount of area that we cover within our school system. And, you know, 22,000 kids and 249 routes is a lot of kids to transport and a lot of road to cover.
Okay. Thank you very much for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, Mr. Ostanik question, and I'm asking, I don't know, and it may be something that we haven't considered. Is there, is there any type of extended warranties that we purchase or can purchase for buses? And, you know, on TV, every time you're watching TV, you're talking about car insurance and those types of things. Is that something that we, they offer for fleets?
I would have to check with our fleet department on that. I don't know the answer standing here. There's not any that I'm aware of, but I'm not saying that there's not any that are out there. I can tell you that there's certain manufacturers that offer a little more warranty, and so that, you know, goes into, comes into play when we start deciding who to purchase from. Like, there's some manufacturers, they'll offer a five-year warranty on a transmission where some may offer a three or a four, you know? So we try to look at those things and take that into account when we start thinking, okay, where, you know, because there's three major bus manufacturers that have state bid, that are on the state bid for Florida. And so when we do that, we try to take those things into account as how do we purchase?
And the other piece is, I think it was 2018 and 2019, we just purchased buses. We're rapidly coming up on that 10-year mark.
Yes, sir.
And did we finish paying for those?
Not yet.
Or close to it or something. But we're going to end up probably going into another cost to replace those buses. So this is, I want the community to understand, this is an ongoing process. It's not something that's a one-time fix. It's constant.
Yes, sir. And I think that's where if we can look at slowly rolling into where that 10%, you know, because we're going to have that big balloon of purchases that are five to six years old now that are going to get that 10- to 12-year mark. So if we can get to where, okay, we start in that process of thinking purchase 10% a year, yes, there's going to be a five years down the road, there's going to be a balloon area where some of those buses are going to have to probably stretch out a little further. And I, you know, I understand that. I think we all do. But if we continue on through that, we will eventually get, if we think 10 years down the road, to where we're at that 10-year mark of rolling through.
Okay. And if I can, I went, I met with Ms. Usher, and that was one of the things I had remembered you sharing was that essentially, you, transportation, if we're going to do it right, we need four-ish million dollars every year forever and ever and ever, amen, so that we can continue to refresh annually and never find ourselves in the hole we were in eight years ago when we bought all of those buses. But instead, we're just on a constant recycle and putting new out every single school year. That's your intention, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then how, I think you've said this number before, but on a yearly basis, how many miles are we putting on a bus?
It depends on the route. Obviously, some of our outskirts routes are going to have a lot more miles, and we try to rotate buses in a way to balance some of those mileage numbers out. So I can't really say.
I just, I feel like I remember you telling me that, like, in a matter of two years, buses are capping at their mileage for their warranty, some buses.
Some are, yes, ma'am.
And so it's not even as much about getting more years on a transmission because we're, there's a, it's a year-mileage combination generally, and we're hitting the mileage far quicker than the year cap for the warranty. And so for us, that is the barrier is the amount that we are traveling, those extended warranties are not generally very beneficial to us because we're going to hit, we're going to hit the mileage quicker than the years, no matter what, because.
We do in general, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rowan.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Ostanik. 10 years, 100,000 miles, you know, we'd blow that out of the water very quickly. So I don't know how much of a negotiating opportunity that really would be to try to get the companies to say, hey, you know, well, our goal is to turn over the fleet and, you know, replace 10% a year, and to get our business, you're really going to have to extend it out, you know, for some of these buses. I don't know if that could work or not. I do know that this board, it's one of our legislative priorities to get an allocation from the state that matches the need because roughly half of the money that we need to run a safe, efficient, and reliable fleet has to come from our general fund every year, right? And not every district has this, is the size of Rhode Island, and that's not going to change. So we're going to continue to advocate, to make it very clear that in our situation in a few other counties, the need far outweighs the allocation. And if we can get the allocation a little more equitable, then you'll have more money coming your way.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
That's the plan.
And just to clarify on that, the buses are on a state bid, so it's not like we can go out and say, hey, can you give us a better price? It's all, it's all through the state bid on the buses.
Including warranty, like you can't really negotiate that much. It doesn't sound.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rowan. Very good. Thank you for bringing that up because we have been working and getting, I hate to say, but we have been getting good response in those conversations. So we are hopeful. So keep coming before us, Mr. Ostanik.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Campbell, did you have anything you wanted to share?
No, I just appreciate the work you're doing, Mr. Ostanik, and the more we can get students to school on time, the better it's always going to be if that means we need more buses. We don't have the money for a lot of our brand-new buses, but I'm grateful that we have a plan in place that we're going to be rotating in. And it's similar to, we'll talk about it in a little bit, that the board has set aside money specifically for athletic capital needs every year. We've set aside money in the capital budget every year to at least help replace a few of your buses in the fleet every year. So thank you.
Ms. Rowan.
The last thing I'll say is that, you know, I keep thinking back to how many years the big yellow buses have been the way to get kids to school. And I know with purchasing the vans, you know, that has helped with some pockets of students. And I would just love to see continued innovative thinking in that vein. You know, if there's pockets of students out in the forest area or out in the Denon area that need to get somewhere, you know, what would be the least expensive, most cost-efficient and time-efficient and reliable way to collect up those kids from that area and zip them wherever they need to go? You know, rapid response, something. Because we have large groups of students, as we're reminded on social media, that are gathering and waiting for buses at certain locations. But then there's others in outlying areas, I'm thinking especially, that if we can figure out a way to just get them where they need to go in a more innovative way, maybe that'll help us, too. Maybe ask the kids.
They're innovative. Anything else? Any other comments, concerns? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ostanik. I hope you feel the love and support from the board on helping you get what you need for transportation.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Okay, he asked for $4 million. We were able to budget three, but hopefully, we'll can do $4 million in the following years. On the new vehicles, we have 1.4, the majority of these vehicles. They are for grongs, custodian, and maintenance. Those vehicles are quite expensive, like the clamshell truck is almost 300, the septic pump truck. So we have that in there. Charter school capital outlay, I mentioned the pass-through of 627. From the mileage, we have to give them 277, and from the sales tax, 860, totaling 1.765 for charter school. The 4.5 is a transfer from maintenance of the general fund for staffing. Portable building purchases, talking to a maintenance supervisor. This is just in case of emergency. We have leased portables, and we pay monthly for those leased portables, and that's why we have the 1.1 budgeted for that. The property insurance is 2.2. Transfer to debt service is the 25 million, which includes impact fee and the local capital improvement. Impact fee is a justified use of the monies for the debt service because it was based on cops, and the cops were used for capacity projects. And then we have equipment maintenance. We have broken down our maintenance projects into two categories, minor and major. Minor, they're really for Mr. Duncan, so I'll go over those projects. And then I'll ask Ms. Boomback to go over the major ones. The minor, this is, these are really for unscheduled emergency projects, routine. And we have the ADA compliance. Athletic capital needs, the board asked that we put $2 million in there for athletic, in the plan for athletic fields. Mr. Tucker was supposed to be here, but he's out of town. He gave me a list of what he'll use his $2 million for. He said, storage buildings, bleachers, scoreboards, and shot clocks, tennis and pickleball courts, and resurfacing, and a rubberized track at Westport High. So those are the list he gave me for his $2 million, and we have that projected throughout the five years. Mr. Duncan will be working closely with him, with maintenance staff, doing a lot of this work. Therefore, he'll be able to extend that money and really try to use it as many projects as possible. They're just basic routine. With the general floor replacement, you all approved the Denon Ellen High School floor replacement, that was 800. And if there is any money left over, the next project in line on the priority list for flooring is H Street. Then painting, we have some painting projects going on right now. We have the exterior at Howard Middle, Telma Park Center, and the interior at President. Plan for next year, North Marion Middle School exterior, and Romeo Refinish Roof Coating. Playground for kindergarten, we have $250,000 in there. That could pay for maybe three to four playgrounds. The priority right now, playgrounds underway are Denon Ellen Elementary, Emerald Shores, and Legacy. Those are in progress. Next will be Romeo and Sunrise, and next Greenway, Fort McCoy, and Oak Crest.
Chair?
Yes.
Just to follow up on Mr. Tucker's list, if the board could be emailed the list in its entirety of what is being done, just historically, so not under Ms. Usher's leadership, but historically, we've been given, you know, district-wide improvement for XYZ, and then there has been an inequity among what district-wide really looks like. So understanding, we obviously all agreed to, you know, the significant amount of that $2 million going to the rubberized track at Westport, but the way I received the information in that work session was that essentially, the rest of it was going to be equitably distributed among all of the high schools to meet needs across all camp. campuses, so I would just like for there to be some itemization for that, at least as a follow-up to this, um, and, because we approved this in a board meeting, or no? No?
Um...
Okay, that's fine.
Dr. James will come back at September 23rd, and I'll make sure Mr. Tucker attaches that itemized list to that agenda item.
That's what I, that's what I was asking. So that would be helpful for me. I just really wanna make sure that we are all on the same page, because this is the first time in probably anyone's memory that the board is prioritizing this much money for athletics in Marion County, and I'm proud of us doing that and making that priority. So I just wanna ensure that a year from now, constituents don't come to me and go, well, why did they get this and we didn't get this? And I say, well, you know, I didn't, I didn't really look into it, I didn't get a full list. And so, just truly understanding the full impact would be great.
Certainly, okay. Now, we're moving on to the major maintenance projects. Mrs. Vran Bumbak is our Director of Facilities, and she'll go over these projects with you.
Good morning.
Um, we have been working very hard on this, uh, on this list. There's lots of projects, and we have working very hard with, uh, ma- the maintenance department to prioritize the list. They are the boots on the ground, they know, um, how each campus looks like and what is, um, needed, and they, they prioritize it with us. Uh, we will also work together then with Ross EMs, with the data we're receiving, they're in the middle of putting it in. Hopefully we can fine-tune that data very soon. We will need a little bit more impact, uh, input from the maintenance department on really fine-tuning what systems are in each school, so that will help us, uh, in the future to really dissect, um, the needs and making sure that, that we need, that we meet the needs. Um, we also had to add some, um, emergency items that were brought to our attention, you will see them in the list for this year. So even knowing the, the larger items, there's always some small items that, uh, really need to be addressed quickly, and we try our best to, um, tuck them in, um, right away where needed. So for this year coming up, um, the funded projects, uh, will start with Bellevue Middle School, HVAC upgrades. Um, it was, if you look last year, it was a little further out, but, um, you know that AC is, um, in worse shape than we thought, so we had to move that up a little bit and prioritize that. Uh, we didn't have the whole funds, but that's okay, we're having 1 million allocated this year to start the sign, because the sign does take some time, and then when the rest of the funds are available next year, we have the, the funds to go straight into construction. Denellen High School, the Wellhouse, uh, building replacement, it's a, an, a rollover project. We funded it last year, but there is actually two well sites, uh, on that campus, and we wanted to increase, um, the funding a little bit to address the second Wellhouse, or Wellsite on campus as well. Um, so we're having funds from last year, we're adding the funds from this year as well. Um, you should see a GMP come to the board very soon, the design was finished, and, uh, we can start, um, replacing those two sites on Denellen High's, um, site. ML Schwartz, that's a, ML Schwartz, a bus loop canopy replacement, that's one of those, uh, emergency items. Um, we looked at the canopy, it's, uh, not in good shape, and it's a safety concern for us, so we prioritize that, uh, and will get an engineer to, um, draw out a fix for that soon and get it repaired. Greenway Elementary School, HVAC, is also a rollover project. We started design last year, the design has finished. Um, this year we will focus on just the cooling towers, we will split that construction in two years as well. Um, we've worked on getting the cooling towers replaced first, and then next year, when we have the rest of the funding, we will do the rest of the campus, just like we did, uh, Denellen Elementary School this year, if you remember, in the summer, we tore out the whole campus. Um, here, we are gonna split it in two phases. Then you have the new data center in there, um, design has kicked off again, um, we're fine-tuning the scope, uh, the design team is working very hard to have construction documents by the end of the year. Um, we, we have split it in two years of funding there as well. We want to, um, at least get the shell and the major construction funded this year, and then next year, maybe the interior build out and, uh, FFNE items, uh, and that will, uh, we will work closely with the contractor that, that aligns with their timeline to get the data center up and running, um, as needed. Then we have North Marion High School, the water main and the sewer, uh, replacement, um, that is also a rollover project. Last year, we started with an analysis, what is actually underground there. It's a very old school, it was pieced together, we really had to find, um, all the lines and really understand where, where they go and what needs to be replaced, and it is a very large undertaking. The summers are very short, so we have split it in two phases. Um, we don't want to tear out all the water and sewer, and then students come back and, uh, it's not up and running. So we're gonna, uh, fine-tune the scopes in two phases, so it's doable over the summer, and we don't get into a crunch that the water is not going. And the last one funded this year is the Shady Hill Bus Loop, it's the same as the other, um, canopy at the bus loop, it is, um, not in good shape, and we want to repair it as out of safety concerns. If you look at the, the five years we have projected out, um, those are our priorities, as we see them right now, are discussed with maintenance departments. There is more needs for sure, um, we just don't have the funding in the next five years, but each year we evaluate, um, the needs again, like the Bellevue Middle one, we had to move up because, um, it's needed. Um, you also see sometimes, uh, funding split out at least in two, uh, phases, so we start with the design in one year, and then get the construction going in the second year. That helped us, um, priori, or, or fast-track some of those, um, projects as well. And then we have a few rollover projects that you approved already last year, um, and they are in the works. Uh, we have the Collier Campus Roof Replacement will start it soon, the Denellen High School Roof Replacement, you have a GMP coming, um, shortly on the board. Uh, the East Marion Elementary wa- walls and doors, um, the design has started, we have already seen some plans and talked with the principal and Safe Schools. Fort McCoy, the Wellhouse, um, I think the GMP is on the next board agenda, you will see that, and the Osceola Middle School doors and walls, uh, at Building Two, that, um, the sign has started as well.
Chair?
Yes.
Chair, I just have one question.
Yes.
Um, on Slide 11, in red at the bottom, it shows an increase, um, of, of almost 20%, and it's about 20 million dollars in major projects, but I don't see where we're gaining 20 million dollars, and all of the other budgets are exactly the same, so, essentially.
So you, are you looking on, at the total non-capacity projects, the, the total on the bottom?
Yeah, so on Slide 11, it indicates that there's a 31% increase, which there is, it goes from 13 million to 32 million over five years for the major projects. I'm just wondering where we're capturing that 20 million dollars, because there's not less money for minor maintenance, there's not less money for cap, um, debt service, or ever, all of those things are very, um, consistent, and then the revenue is very consistent. So where did we find 20 million dollars?
You, you will see that on Slide 17, some of those funds are also coming out of the, uh, the millage, and that will close that gap. Those are the capacity projects.
So we're able to allocate more money in the subsequent years to the non-capacity maintenance because we have other additional capacity projects rolling off. So the total amount doesn't change other, by, other than like 500,000 or hu- or million dollars a year, but in that particular category, we're able to allocate more resources to the maintenance because we're not allocating so much on capacity. At least that's...
That is correct.
...the way I'm understanding it. I guess, and this can be a, a conversation for another time, um, but the revenue hasn't changed, 3 million dollars over five years. So, I understand what Dr. Campbell is saying, but I don't see that reflected in this PowerPoint, I guess, is my, is my statement. Because everything is very, very, very consistent, but we pick up 20 million dollars in money, um, and these projects are essentially additional capacity replacement projects, are additional projects that are expenditures, not revenue.
Yes, and it's like, uh, what you have seen at the elementary schools, we had several light items for FFNE or off-site improvements, and that was funded, uh, not through the COPS, that was funded from millage, and that's the same situation here, it's just listed on a different slide.
Okay, I, well, we can talk later. I don't, it doesn't, I don't believe that the slide deck is clearly representing that. I don't think it's clearly demonstrating where we're picking up 20 million dollars from, and maybe that's because the decreases aren't on there, but...
Dr. James, we're not picking up throughout the five-year, our revenues stay consistent, like at 114 to 116 million.
Yes.
The issue this year is we have, as Ms. Bumbak mentioned, we have FFNE coming out of the millage for the new schools. We have to divide the 114 into three major projects. We talk about the support with the debt service, we talk about major maintenance, and then capacity project. Right now, on the major maintenance, it's much less. We have money going to the data center, we have, um, money going to millage, there, uh, so we, we have them under a different category right now, but the total revenue more or less will remain the same. I hope we could pick it up, some more money, but, um, in five years, but we're not. It's just how it's distributed, and this year, the maintenance amount is, um, much less than the other years, because we have money from this year millage going to other projects, and not just the major maintenance projects. So what we try to do is balance our expenditures and revenue, and we get about 114 million, and that will continue. But where we use the money, on the major maintenance, or on the capacity, or for support, varies how we split up the money. And for major maintenance this year, because of all the additional costs we have with the new projects, with the FFNE, we could not put the 25 million here, but next year, we'll be able to go back and hopefully continuously increase major maintenance, because that's where we have our biggest backlog, with the 2 billion dollars.
Okay.
Thank you, um, sorry. Accomplishment. And first, I really have to thank Ms. Bumbak and her, and the facility staff. This is a lot for a small staff, staff to accomplish, and we're quite proud of it. We opened the two new elementary schools, the Wing Edition at Liberty, the MTC Auto Diesel. We did accessibility, accessibility and safety projects, um, we did the district-wide fencing, the lighting and electrical upgrades, we did quite a number of roof projects and HVAC projects, and, um, we just continue every day adding new projects to the list, so it's always on a continuous basis, and trying to get everything done on the budget and on time. Previously funded project, we talked about Ross Prairie Elementary, Windy Oaks Elementary, Liberty Middle School addition, New High School CCC with the name South Marion High, scheduled to open next August, the Osceola Middle School Gymnasium for October. We just had a meeting yesterday with, uh, to review the GMP for Lake Ware Middle Replacement, that will be coming to you in October, and the Marion Technical College addition. Additional capacity projects, and this comes from, um, your sales tax project, we had additions to Marion Oaks, Ham- Hamit, um, Buon, and Horizon Academy. We deleted those based on board, um, recommendation, and we added the pre-K8 in the Southwest area to provide enrollment relief to these schools. What we're proposing to do is to push back the K8, because these schools are currently operating with portables, I must say, at about 80, 80%, and we believe the more critical need is some of the projects such as the Denellen. So we do have the K8 still in there, it was just the recommendation from the sales tax list, is to put it after Denellen Middle High. Denellen Middle High, again, it's on the sales tax list, and we, um, the middle school is really failing, we have a lot of infrastructure, plumbing issues, a quite, quite large amount in deferred maintenance. Uh, and in the budget, it's 150 million dollars. We have Bellevue before this with sales tax money, so the earliest we can start on this school is 2029, getting about 37 million every year, we have to let the money accumulate to be able to do it. But we do have some monies in the plan where we can start on our master planning next year, to see where we want to put the school, how we want to design it, phasing, doing some due diligence, doing some pre-assessment with environmental findings, or, um, and use the money for that, and start working on it next year. Um, new capacity, uh, we still have the new high school, 18 million, you'll see that coming back to you in a, in GMP four. This 18 million is 5 million for FFNE, and 13 million for, um, approximately for the new GMP four. This has a lot to do, um, to pay for the athletic facilities, to build out the areas, courtyards, sud, um, different courts, um, wall panels, flooring in this new GMP. So, this will be an additional GMP coming to the board in October for additional funds. Bellevue Elementary School, this is fa- um, sales tax funded, and we're starting on that right now. We plan to fa- to fund it in two years, we, um, at about 65, 70 million, 65 million, hopefully it stays at that. And we have the feasibility study in there for next year, uh, um, and the furniture for the new middle school next year. We talk about balancing a budget, we certainly don't want our expenditures to go beyond our revenues. So there are three main parts to the capital plan, the district support debt service payment that we have to do, the non-capacity, which are the minor and major maintenance project, and the new capacity replacement. So we take 114 million, and we try to distribute it equally, but in, in this year, non-capacity maintenance project did not get as much as it will in the com- um, upcoming years. Beyond the 2030, we also have two, um, additions, but at Ward Highlands and Maplewood, and those were on the sales tax project. We didn't prioritize those anywhere in this five-year plan. Those schools are operating about 78, 77% right now. But after the study, we look at school utilization, we look at projection every year, to see what are the trends, where do we need new capacity, do we need to consolidate, do we need to change, um, level? But with increase, without an increase for capacity project, we will have to take money from our LCI and our sales stacks to fund any capacity project, because impact fee is supposed to fund capacity project, we're only getting the 8 million, and we have to pay back our debt service. So that will be challenging, after we look at what we need. And despite getting all those additional resources, um, the sales stacks and the impact fee, we're only funding 4% of estimated backlog for major maintenance, which is almost 2 billion. We do need to find some type of new funding source to keep pace with development and continue to provide a healthy environment for students. Thank you. Dr. Brewer?
Oh, go ahead, I was gonna ask you.
Thank you, um, and Coach Ostonik already left, but I wanted to just say thank you to his team as well. They've worked really hard getting this year off to the, a good start. They're also still working on, um, analyzing the on-time spreadsheet that you've asked for, so we have not forgotten that. They're still working on that with the new program. Um, but thank you to Ms. Usher and her team, we'll wait for your comments.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Usher. Dr. Campbell, I know you had a, a question or a concern.
Uh, well, it, it just goes back to Slide 17, and I think there's a philosophical conversation for us to have, and Board, you know, this was my position whenever we had this conversation, when we were discussing sales tax priorities. First of all, allocating almost 4 million dollars for a feasibility study for Denellen Middle High, I think is unwarranted personally. I believe that that is something our in-house team can do, similar to what they're currently working on for us as a north-end utilization concept, and we haven't seen that yet, but if we can do that in-house, I believe we can also do this Denellen project in-house. My personal recommendation still remains that... My personal recommendation still remains that these two campuses stay separate. That we build a classroom building on the Dunellen Middle School property. And potentially that site even become a K8 with heavy on the middle side, light on the, on the elementary side. And with the existing gymnasium and auditorium that have recently been refurbished, both of them. Those are not things we're going to be able to, but we, we most likely won't have an auditorium and a new rebuild. Any, that, those aren't necessarily happening as often. And that campus is still a very viable space. And so what I was trying to do, and I haven't done this yet, I've been trying to figure out. Then that rezones us for the elementary schools in the Dunellen area and even somewhat into Marion Oaks. Alleviating some of that pressure off of Marion Oaks, potentially sending some of those students to Dunellen Elementary. And then having that 200 to 300 student elementary school on that Dunellen Middle property plus the middle school students. I, I see that being potentially an option we would want to pursue in this feasibility study. Additionally, then build a classroom building on the Dunellen High campus. We don't have a full picture of what their enrollment will look like once we have the new high school open. We know we're bursting at the seams by high school students right now. But if our early grade indicators are showing us a projection of what we need to see 10 years from now, I'm not certain that building capacity in some of these schools is necessarily the direction we need to take. Just forward thinking. I mean, if, if we're seeing units being cut in our elementary school grades, those students are eventually going to become middle school and high school students. And what does that look like over the 10 to 15-year period? So we're forecasting long way out. Those two campuses though, Dunellen Middle and Dunellen High, both are still projected to have growth on the Southwest side. So it would warrant rezoning for sure in the elementary grades, and I think that we could do that. And we also know that the capacity issues that Dunellen High is having with their facility capacity, not necessarily growth capacity, like the plumbing and the roofing and the paint, all the things like that. So I'm not certain that my recommendation would actually cost us 150 million dollars to make improvements on both campuses. If we built a classroom building on one and a classroom building on the other. But that would be my recommendation. And I think that Dunellen feasibility study per se, once we get wrapped up with whatever this north end conversation is that the team is working diligently on, then they could just roll into the Dunellen and not wait till next year if we're not working out any money to do it. And so we understand the challenges that we're having in Dunellen with the facility needs, maintenance needs. But that would continue to be my recommendation, which I've made before. But I think having those two campuses separate and actually converting the Dunellen Middle Site to a K8, heavy on the middle side, light on the, on the elementary side would be a better option than a combo school.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Dr. James?
Thank you. I'll piggyback off what Dr. Campbell said, and then I just have a few remarks of my own. But I completely agree with her that spending $4 million to hire a consultant is not in line with how I want to spend sales tax money when we seem to not have enough money to do much of anything. Spending $4 million to do a study is concerning to me. So I am in complete alignment with Dr. Campbell that when we wrap up the north end conversation, then going out to the west end and have a west end and internally do a west end. And if we find ourselves at the end of the entire thing, unsatisfied with where we've landed, then we can say to the taxpayer as the elected individual, I can say, we tried to do it internally and we just can't quite figure out how to make it work. And we need to hire, we need to outsource it so that we can truly understand the true impact. But it, it's hard for me to articulate to the taxpayer, spending $4 million when we can't seem to fund a lot of projects that need to get funded, when we haven't given it a good shot on our own. Especially when we're essentially doing it on the north end right now. So I, I can echo her sentiments there. My concern is when we go back up to Mr. Ayers' slide where we talked about, um, projected revenue from homes and the Power School data. So when I got on the board, we were just starting the Banesh study. And then the Banesh study ended and essentially we went with the moderate expectation of 3, 3,500 homes. And correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm going off memory right here, but we said essentially 3,500 permits pulled annually. And that's where we got our 15,000 number, 15 million, not 15,000, God bless, 15 million number. And now turns out a year later, essentially 60% of those permits were not filed. Now, I do believe there was a bit of a hurry up and rush because the county did a stopgap of, of three months essentially where people could just file. So it will be interesting to see where we go in a year from now. But the data as it exists demonstrates that we are not pulling 3,000 to 4,000 permits annually. So I'm confused why Power School would say, and why we collectively would include this data when we have data inside this PowerPoint that is demonstrating we are not pulling 3,000 to 4,000. And if you ask anyone who's boots on the ground, permitting is slower not greater. So if, if permitting has slowed and it was slower than what Banesh thought it would be at 3,500, then I do think that to expect to get another 3,500 permits filed in the next 12 months and then get more students from it, um, concerns me because the data as it's presented via impact fees is not showing that currently. So I think that there is a little bit of misalignment potentially in the data sources between Power School, whatever Banesh did. I imagine JB Pro's, I've been told is digging into this as well and where the impact fees are to some degree. And so I think there needs to be some cross-communication of sorts because it's not, it's not picking up. If anything, the boom came and the boom left and now we, we got in on the, the back end of the boom. And so I'm, I have concerns about the data on this slide and, and how it, I certainly wouldn't want, especially when you guys, when you put our planning in for impact fees, you held consistent at where we are now. We didn't go back to the 15,000. But if 3,000 to 4,000 new homes are being built in a year, then that number for 26, 27 should be 15,000. So internally, I think we're pretty consistently believing that it's not that high. And where we are now at about 8 and 1/2 to 10 million is probably a more appropriate number to budget for. So then those Power School numbers are not necessarily accurate, in my opinion. So that's my, that is my concern there. And then we're not talking about sales tax expenditures, but it was mentioned in talking about future planning. And so, Board, I just want to continue and I'm not going to stop continuing to highlight this. Of a $400 million sales tax budget, District Five will have received 1% of $400 million if this plan continues. Because over, almost 2/3 of the budget will have been used between Bellevue Elementary, a Dunellen project, and then a pre-K8. Almost 2/3 of the budget will be gone by the time those three projects are done. Outside, obviously, of the two very small projects in comparison, which is East Marion and Osceola. For school safety, which the board, we said that has to be a top priority. And so when we look at the other needs that have been very important for many board members, going back, talking about Wings at Ward Highlands and Wings at Maplewood and really addressing kids being in portables, it leaves 1% of the $400 million for the north end. And that's for basic safety at East Marion. And I just want the board to continue to truly just, I'm, I am, as the District Five representative, pleading that we collectively give a little bit of energy as we continue conversations in years to come about the voters collectively voted in a sales tax. And there should be at least a mild level of equitable distribution of that sales tax. I will say, and I, I'm going to maintain this as well. I do not think we need to spend a dime on the north end to bolster facilities and fix facilities with sales tax money until we address capacity. And so those two go together in my head. I do not think maintaining schools with 300 kids is, 200 kids, 300 kids is financially responsible. So I want to see us address capacity. And in addition to addressing capacity, we also address facility. Because there's got to be some level of equitable distribution of the sales tax money to the north end over the course of 10 years. So I will continue to stand by that sentiment as these conversations proceed. And I know this wasn't a sales tax conversation, but I didn't want it to go by since the pre-K8 was mentioned without at least maintaining that thought hopefully in the back of your head. So that's all I got. Thank you for your work, Facilities Team.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Campbell?
Thank you. I, I did, while we're talking this, just because Ms. Usher and I spoke about it yesterday, I did also want to publicly say a couple of other considerations, obviously not for this year necessarily. But as we build the data center, we will need to have extensive conversation about what happens to the downtown properties. What are we doing with that? Are we vacating those spaces? She and I talked briefly about, we, we understood, let me back up. There's a little bit of PTSD for at least three of us whenever we talk administration capacity. And I'm not saying we're putting any money towards administrative buildings per se. Because that certainly, before we even had addressed any of these school needs, we were talking building a $40 million administration building. I'm not saying that that's still not needed. There's still something needed where we can have the majority of our employees on the same campus. Prior to putting an alternative school now named Bridgeway Academy soon to be on this campus, we had more capacity for potential office spaces where we could have moved some more of those folks. The HR department, the finance department payroll, some of those folks could have potentially come here. But we're, we have a city block. We know that we're going to be vacating as soon as the data center is completed. But we might have more than one city block if we really start figuring out where we can put some of our district operations. So that's just long-term thinking, strategy-wise, what we're, we're having conversation potentially about in the future. Would like to have those conversations sooner rather than later. So we can start having at least somewhat of a plan on what that looks like. Secondarily, within the next 18 months or so, we are going to be vacating a space that is the current Lake Weir Middle School property, maybe 18 months to 24 months. But that is the current Lake Weir Middle School property. I believe it would also benefit us as we're rolling into legislative priorities, I think is our next agenda item. I think it would benefit us to go ahead and start forecasting, certainly if the board is in consensus on this, on what it would look like to request an appropriation in the 2027 cycle, not this one, 2027 cycle, for a conversion of that campus to an early learning academy on the south side. I believe our kindergarten data that the team worked on for us showed that region specifically has the greatest need for early learning. We have our own data to back that up. We understand there are significant needs in that, south community, specifically southeast, Weersdale, Summerfield, et cetera. And having a south early learning academy would only benefit us long-term. And if we requested that as an appropriation, that potentially would save us the capital dollars and we would be able to do what we're trying to do already. But I wanted to publicly make that statement. I kind of haphazardly said that to a legislator the other day, but had not made a public statement about that. Certainly only if the board is in consensus to move forward with something like that. But these are the kinds of forward-thinking conversations I think we need to be having as we're talking five-year plan, even though we know officially we're only approving one of these years. But as we're thinking five years, let's really think what five years looks like. And, and where we're, how we're going to be selling that property similar to the way we did the downtown. Or are we wanting to sell the Lake Weir Middle property? Probably not. That's where our bus depot is. So that's going to be a whole thing we'd have to afford to, to move. So if we repurposed that campus specifically for early learning, I think that would only benefit our students and helping every student succeed. So those are my other thoughts.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Ms. Doran?
If Board Member Cummings wants to go ahead, because there's a lot of conversation about Dunellen, and I do kind of want to hear what you have to say before I say a whole lot else.
Well, right now, um, I'll, I'll defer, I'll defer. Because we know that there is a great need out in the Dunellen area. Dr. Campbell said it earlier about we're dealing with some aging buildings and some huge problems out there. So I don't want us to take that Dunellen off, off the list or, or push it further down the list. We got to, we have to continue to look at, um, we know Dunellen High School is an old school. And we, they're 1,800 students, I think, right?
Yes.
So we have to address those issues at some point. But I do understand where Dr. James was saying about that 1% being spent on the north end. There has to be some equitable distribution around the county of what we're trying to do. So I, I'm good.
Right. Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Okay, back to you, Ms. Doran.
Thank you. And, and you know, that bit that you shared is, is helpful to me. I will say that anywhere, anytime that we can potentially save $4 million by doing, you know, in-house feasibility studies, I'm all in. I, I realize that the size of the team and the heavy lifting that you all are doing and looking at the accomplishments on slide 13, it's not like you guys are sitting around eating donuts. But $4 million is a lot of money. And so if there is a way to do that, I would definitely support it and want to see that happen. Circling back around, you know, we are continuing to have to bear the brunt of just too many years of under-finance needs, you know? I don't think any of us sitting up here thought it was going to take two years to get 40% worth of impact fees. So my, my first question is, Ms. Usher, and we talked about this a little bit yesterday. Just like if the board decides to put the 1 mil, you know, back on the, back on the ballot for 2026, I think Attorney Powers, a while ago, you gave us a timeline and I believe the conversation would need to start in January with the 1 mil. Okay, I would like to see a timeline for getting real on the discussion of updating our, our impact fees. You know, we tried and did for 13 years to try to help this community bounce back. And sadly, it hurt us, you know? Reflecting back, if, if I had known and had a crystal ball that it was going to take that long, you know, it would have been 100% seven years ago. So you have to learn, right? And you have to see the whole field and be well-prepared not, you know, to make different decisions as, as time moves along. Because it's the Southwest that is continuing to grow. And I'm very curious about the disparity in permits and, and all of these things I asked a while ago about permits and, and impact fees and, and if, if any, you know, had there been exemptions and how many? Because this is funding that is greatly needed, that is greatly affecting our ability to serve students and to provide them with this safest learning environment possible. You know, that's just the bottom line. It's not, the money's not going into any of our pockets. You know, it's going to the kids. So we continue to be in a very challenging position because there are too many needs that are too urgent and not enough money to go around, you know? And of course, I would love to see, I mean, Maplewood is, I don't even know how they're going to get those portables out of there. I'm sure they've taken root and, and same with, with Ward Highlands. But right now, they're serviceable, kids are learning, so, and, and we need, other projects are more of a priority. Until we have a total plan for the north end and what we're going to do, I guess I would say that regardless of where the sales tax money is being spent, it is elevating our district because we're meeting the most critical needs first. And we also know that we have a lot of kids that don't even attend schools in their district because of choice and, and mobility and opportunity. And I guess I would just draw a caution to, or maybe just encourage us as a board to see the whole field. You know, we know what our needs are and, and to, to pit one district against another, it doesn't really move us forward. I just don't want to lose sight of, of the true goal, which is doing everything we can to learn from the past, to be nimble, to keep moving forward, keep serving the areas of the greatest need and, and then doing the, the best that we can, you know, with all of the rest of them. You know, there's a couple of big priorities in my district too that I see got deferred. It just kind of is what it is. It just kind of is what it is. And I think it presents a stronger picture of our board to the community to be as united as, as we can in what our, our vision is and what we're trying to do and, and why we're trying to do it. So those are my reflections at the current moment. I continue to thank your team for everything that you're doing to make silk purses out of sow's ears, you know, with, with very little funding, you know, very old schools and very new and urgent needs, you know, when it comes to the safety and all of it. Everything is just so much more expensive now. So that's what I have at the moment.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Ms. Usher, I will be brief because my fellow board members have shared, shared my same, the same thoughts that I have. And so, you know, as we look at the timeline for impact fees, I feel like this board is very community-minded. It's something I'm proud of. And so I just want to encourage everyone to be community-minded because as we educate the children in Marion County, they grow up and they're part of our workforce. They buy homes and rent apartments and all of those things. So it's a very cyclical cycle. And what we do as a district supports everybody in Marion County. And so just really following what Ms. Thrower said, that conversation of, on impact fees, we did discuss that too yesterday. Bless your heart, yesterday as we came, Ms. Campbell was leaving, I was coming in, I was leaving, Ms. Thrower was coming in. And so you got to have that same conversation over. And I'm sure you were saying it in your sleep last night. So thank you for the time that you give us, you know, to iron out some of the concerns and questions that we have. But that being said, a couple of things I just want to highlight that other board members have said. I'm really interested in what Dr. Campbell shared and it did come out up at one of our legislative meetings. That early childhood center south of town, I think, I think the data does support it even right now with some very, very basic information that we've gathered. And so I think that's an exciting idea. I think it's something we can do. And I think it matches what we've done on the north end with Fordham and, and we're seeing great success there. So that, that idea is exciting to me. And I look forward to as we move forward in, in legislative conversations, you know, that's constantly changing too. But right now, we have a seat at the table. And so that, that's exciting. I hope to get some support, not only in transportation, but in early childhood. So just food for thought. As we wrap up this conversation, Board, is there anything else that you'd like to share or ask? Okay. Ms. Usher, thank you very much. Is there any public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item, which is legislative priorities. Dr. Campbell, would you like to lead our conversation for legislative? You usually do.
Sure. Thank you. So I believe after our board meeting the other day, I think you all received the, at least typed out version of what I was saying publicly. If we could just go through them one more quick time and ensure that this is exactly where we want to land, that way I will submit them today to FSBA for their consideration. Those platform initiative items are due tomorrow. And we also can finalize whatever the little flyer is that we're going to have for our remaining meetings that we have coming up. So if you all have that document or I can talk us through, the first item is amend 1003.26, subsection 1, subsection B, allowing school districts to initiate chronic absenteeism strategies immediately upon the fifth unexcused student absence. I want to make sure that that is what we want to land on as a final. I personally still think that we need to get it to the 10th unexcused student absence. And then once that is in place, that we then expand that from there. Similarly to cell phone situations that the legislature did, they had some level of cell phone law in place at first and now it's bell-to-bell of elementary and middle school. And so I, I think getting us over the finish line, at least removing that 90 days, will get us at least the start of what we're asking for. And then if that can pass off the House and the Senate floor, then in subsequent session, we then ask for that to be lessened. But I want feedback from everyone to ensure that we do want to stick with fifth unexcused student absence as we discussed in the board meeting.
Surprisingly, I'll share. I do understand the thought process, but I think that our legislators really need to understand the, the urgency of this. You know, this statute has not been reviewed since 1980. And I think that we have a golden opportunity here. We, the state of Florida continues to be in the top three to five of states in the country that are struggling with attendance still. And in 2021, we were at 37%. In 2025, we're only down to 33%. And our goal for 2026 in our strategic plan is to get it to 10%. That's next year. And we are, this is like a tax when you think about it, you know, when, when kids don't come to school. What it costs all of us across the board, top to bottom, you know, learning outcomes, ability to be functional in society, all those things. There is a sense of urgency here. I would rather have them tell us, based on our data, we don't see the same sense of urgency, so we're just going to plod along. You know, I guess they can choose to do what you said. They, they can do whatever they want. But I would be remiss as a school board member, I think. And we would be remiss as school board members of a district that is struggling mightily to not convey the sense of urgency and, and see where that takes us.
Okay.
I concur.
Yes. Reverend Cummings, you concur?
I concur.
Okay. Dr. James?
I'm not committed to, I'm, I'm with the group, so whatever the group wants.
I'm right in line with Ms. Thrower. I, I understand the line of the narrative and the, and the importance of that. But I think the data speaks for itself and it supports what we're asking for. And I think we do a great job in our conversations. And so we explain that, you know, as we're, as we're visiting, that there's an urgency to this five days and see if we can move it across the line.
Okay. Perfect. That's what it will be then.
And I'll, I'll put my offer, you know, where my mouth is. I am happy when we are in our meetings to lead off with attendance because, and, and be the one that tries to sell it. Because if we don't succeed on attendance, then the rest of our legislative priorities will not be as successful. So in our upcoming meetings, it would be my recommendation, I'm happy to lead off that conversation on attendance. Then I think we have at least two board members sitting up here that are very passionate about gifted. We have one that's got some solid experience in school safety. You know, we've got a board chair that, that supports all of it. So, you know, give each of us a, a chance to speak on, on the topics that really are our shared passion and, and our individual passions as well. And then if it doesn't work, you can blame me.
Okay. So I think you've got consensus on that one.
On first one, yes. Second one is, this is where we're getting into that kindergarten age. And so I have it currently written as revise rule 6A-1.09512 for kindergarten to also meet 720 net instructional hours and revise statute 1003.21 to school ages 5 through 16 and subsection 1, subsection A1, to be five years by the first day of school in any district and school year.
Ooh, that's a mouthful.
It is a mouthful. It combines a lot of information there, but it puts the emphasis on the need for kindergarten in multiple different ways with a Board of Education rule as well as the statute that currently has that at six by the first, or no, six by September 1. So if it evolves to five by the first day of school in any district and any school year, we understand that would be then a rotating timeframe. But if we continue on the pathway of approving calendars two years in advance and we have, then we will always know what that date is. But that just, I'm open to the conversation about both of those elements, both the 5 to 16 as well as kindergarten meeting 720 net instructional hours.
Okay. Dr. James, you're leaning forward.
Well, I'll say I think the 720 is a lot easier of a sell than the second half of the statement. The 720 is just really aligning with what we're doing beyond kindergarten. And they're not napping in kindergarten anyways. So the, the standard, the way it's written is really written and reflective of a time we are no longer doing. So half-day kindergarten or napping kindergarten, it doesn't exist. I don't, I mean, I, I'm not sure there's a school district in Florida that's doing that practice.
It doesn't exist in public school. It does exist in private school. And so that's where this is going to impact some of our private providers that are currently doing half-day quote-unquote kindergartens, which is fine by me. I, I'm just making this.
I don't think the Florida DOE tells private school what to do. Maybe, I mean, actually not at all. I don't think the Department of Education tells a private school what to do at all. So a private school will continue to do half-day kindergarten if they so choose.
But it won't qualify as that student being able to come straight into first grade if we change this rule, which is what's happening currently. You may have students attending one of our private providers for half-day and based on that student's age and the completion of that 540-hour program, they can come into first grade without ever having to be in kindergarten in Marion County public schools. That's current practice.
I, I'm not sure that that practice would change. I think if a parent, if, let's just call it, private school A offers a kindergarten program, it's designed however they design it, when that, if that parent decides public school is now for them in first grade, they're going to show up and say their child completed kindergarten. We're not going to say, how many seat hours did your kid get? We don't ask for their attendance. We don't ask for any of those things upon enrollment. The parent simply indicates, here is their report card or their, their transcript of sorts from kindergarten.
No, I understand that. I do believe that if this does change to say kindergarten is 720 hours, then those private providers would be required to do that in order to meet that.
Yeah. I don't, I completely disagree with that. But either way, that doesn't matter. I think that changing the 720 isn't, isn't, is an easy fix. I think that the five years by the first day of school is going to be a barrier. I'm not really sure why it's such an issue, but I do think it's going to be an issue. And I think that, I think we should include it. And I think the sell should be, as a legislator, you are prioritizing pre-kindergarten and then not subsequently enforcing attendance after pre-kindergarten. So if the legislator is going to continue to prioritize funding pre-kindergarten, then there needs to be enforcement in what follows subsequently after pre-kindergarten. And I think that's the best approach we take. Because essentially, we are allowing people to get a gap year. We are prioritizing VPK as a legislator and then essentially doing summer slide for 15 months. And then they show up theoretically a year after VPK and they've, they've seemingly forgotten everything they learned, right? So I think the approach is to maximize the legislator's priority on how they fund things. So if they're going to fund VPK, then prioritize when children have to show up to kindergarten. I think that would be a sell if I was a legislator. Like, I had never thought about it that way. Like, oh, you're essentially offering a gap year. So, but the way it's written here is fine with me. I just, I, I think we got to, it has to be sold right.
Okay. All right. Yes.
One of the concerns I think we heard from one of our local legislators is, you know, five years old in, in people's heads, you know, it just sounds young, you know? And we live this and breathe it every day. But there was another legislator that, you know, didn't really, it just doesn't have the same familiarity, you know? So if, whatever we can do to, to keep it simple and sympathetic, and one of the things that came out was if there was any wiggle room, like, because it's common knowledge that some people really believe that especially, you know, little boys, five years old can be too young, especially with the rigor of kindergarten these days. And if the, if that five-year-old is in a more of a play-based program for that fifth, you know, five-year, fifth year and then comes to us for kindergarten at six, well, great. But, but we're missing too many kids. And also what we're experiencing is, is that kindergarten is being used like, like a voluntary daycare drop-off, you know? And so if there was a way to put it in the language where maybe it's still voluntary before age six and not September anymore, because that's just the old language that we keep finding, which makes me so happy we're doing this. To have it be, it's, it's voluntary for age five, but if you enroll, you will be held accountable for attendance and all of those things. And if you enroll junior and after a month, two weeks, you think that junior's too immature and not ready, then withdraw junior and please put junior, you know, in a program that's more appropriate for his little fifth grade needs, not fifth grade, age five. Yeah. So that when they're in fifth grade, we actually have something to work with. So I don't know how, how we can make that more clear to, to our legislators because there are people that are just, you know, really kind of worried about that. And the whole mommy state kind of point of view. And, and I understand that. But, but if, but if we're going to be held accountable for these kids' test scores and everything else and we're already as taxpayers paying so much towards pre-K, then why wouldn't we fix this?
Correct. It seems logical to us.
It does. And so just.
But how to explain it to them?
But just for your information, what happens if the Florida School Board Association Legislative Subcommittee chooses to make this a platform initiative item, they will make it with pretty language and have the additional information for the lobbyists to know which rules and which statutes actually need to be changed. I think for our purposes, until we know that pretty language, if in fact they do choose it and if they don't, I think it is beneficial for us to be able to explain to our legislators specifically what rule and specifically what statute we do want changed. So it's not just an ambiguous thought and they have no idea how to actually make the change. So I think if you're in consensus to keep it the way it is currently written, then we can move on to the next one and then we'll just see what happens from there. But it would revise school ages to 5 to 16 and that they need to be five years by the first day of school in any district and school year. Again, it can be massaged, for lack of a better term, if in fact it gains a little bit of traction among peers. And, and I'll know that in midway through October. So before we hit our November date to be in Tallahassee, when we're going to have individual meetings, we'll have a really clear picture of what priorities we have that align directly with other school board members across the state. So are we in consensus with the way it is right now and then?
He's nodding his head.
Okay. Perfect. So next one is the same as we've had, just, and the reason that this is here is just because of the need. Increase FEFP Safe Schools allocation to match the rising cost of providing and maintaining safe schools. It's pretty self-explanatory. We just continue to leave that there. It's important that we submit that as a priority to FSBA so it at least becomes a conversation. Anything that's not submitted, we may think becomes a platform initiative item, but if it's not submitted, it doesn't always make the platform. Okay. So the next one is to modify 1003.57, removing gifted education and create new statute for gifted education services, including a definition, education plans, identification, standards, and funding. I think if we're able to pull that off, we can certainly help with what that legislation language needs to look like if there's even some movement on it whatsoever. But I think that's what we're asking for, more than a categorical for gifted education. We need to first get the statute to change and pull gifted out of exceptional student education statute language so that it can have its own standalone. And then once it has its standalone, in that standalone, explain what gifted education is, explain the education plan and the requirements for, not four years, not it, but either every year, every two years. And the identification, if that's a universal screener, or there's lots of other things that can be put into statute language and the standards for, as well as funding mechanism, which can be written into statute if we get it pulled out of ESE. Attorney Powers is leaning forward.
I would just like to point out, we will need to do a, a crash course in comparing federal law to state law as well, making sure that whatever we propose via state law is going to mesh with what the setup is for federal.
Thank you. I've already done some of that deep dive.
I know you have.
There are states that already do this. And so that's where we need to get an appetite for it first. And I would love to see, this becomes an equity issue that I think other school board members around the state will get on board with. Last year was the first year we introduced it. There was a lot of energy in the room around the idea. There was a lot of energy in the room around the idea, but they didn't really know what they wanted to do. And so I think now that we've gotten more specific, I think if there is energy and it actually makes the platform, then we get really serious about what would that language look like for the gifted education statute. Colorado, Pennsylvania, Georgia, there's, there's several states that do have that, and some of it is funded and some of it is not, and so that's where we'd have to get more specific. But creating its own statute is step one. So if we have consensus on that.
Go.
Okay. Then we have two more, and I, this is one that I want to explain to you, two different pieces. So adjusting the FEFP Transportation Categorical Rurality Index to increase funding for districts larger than 1,500 square miles with more than 40,000 enrolled students. I would like to adjust that down to 1,300 square miles. At 1,300, we pick up Osceola. So I, I have been toying with this back and forth. I continue to say 1,500. I, I have looked at different numbers and, and different calculations. Let me explain to you who is at the 1,500 mark, then at 1,300, we pick up Osceola. If we move it to 1,200, we pick up Hillsborough and Broward. So at 1,500, it's Collier, Miami Dade, Palm Beach, Polk, and Marion. And then at 1,300, we pick up Osceola. I think that Polk, Osceola, and Marion can work in tandem to really push this concept, because we are not exceptionally large districts like a Miami Dade or a Broward, and, and if we go to 1,200, it picks up Hillsborough and Broward. So personally, I think we need to make it 1,300 square miles. It would impact six districts specifically. This will not be an FSBA priority, I can assure you. They don't like picking winners and losers, but that's where we get together. Our lobbyist works directly with Osceola County as well, I think, and, and the Polk County lobbyist, we know quite well as well. So I think it becomes a real conversation starter that we could have with those folks, specifically in those districts, and then Palm Beach, Collier, and Miami Dade come along for the ride. I mean, that, that's kind of how I see that, but if you all are in agreement with the 1,300 square miles, that's what I would like to move it to.
Yes.
I would totally agree, and I would ask that those affected counties be listed.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
There's no other conversation on that one?
I think it's good.
The last thing is allocating funds for our Innovative Career and Technical Education Appropriation Request. I don't know if Dr. Brewer wants to elaborate on what that potentially might be, or if we want to wait until we have some more concrete language.
We'll wait, but we are, we are excited about this, and we are, actually, we have a meeting this afternoon to, with multiple departments, to really fine-tune exactly what our request will be, to make sure it's clear enough that we can get across the finish line.
Great.
Perfect. And that's all we have.
Okay. All right, Ms. Thoreau.
Yeah, thank you, and this is just such good work. I'm really, really proud of, of the board, and, and thank you, you know, poor Campbell for just, you know, pulling us all together. I'm really looking forward to our continued meetings, and, you know, I just keep thinking about what is going to be the best way to sell the kindergarten thing, and I would love to get also a synopsis that we can bring with us about the data that was gathered.
Sure.
Because that opened layman's eyes, you know? It really, really did. That's something that we have to keep in mind, you know, who our audience is when we're talking with these legislators, because when you have one that, you know, they, they have their specific areas of expertise, and it, and then, but then you notice their face change when you start talking about, we had kids that didn't even know their given name. We have kids that don't know how to hold a book, kids that haven't been potty-trained yet, and they're six years old. That really was capturing their attention. And all we're trying to do is save taxpayers money and-
And better educate.
And deliver great service. That's right.
Okay. I agree. Great conversation. Is there any public comment on legislative priorities? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to item 8.1, workforce housing. Attorney Powers.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we've had meetings with Upper Community on August 20th, August 20th, in which we solved a number of smaller problems I've reported to the board since then. Then on August 26, we had another meeting that was productive. We were able to resolve, I believe, a number of our more minor issues, and then focus in on the ones that are larger and more specific. They have now sent us some red lines that I'm currently reviewing, and we have another meeting scheduled with them on the 8th, specifically to deal with those red line issues. Ms. Usher has been included, Mr. Blackman's been included. I think we're getting down to the nitty-gritty of the things that are, all of the sort of small points are, I think, reasonably well-resolved. There are some big, larger issues about public-private partnerships, and some of that is going to just come down to how we're able to be comforted in the knowledge of, of whether it's appropriate. They have agreed to give us legal memoranda and, and have provided some already that will outline exactly what the argument is for why certain structures are appropriate. And then we can essentially go back and forth and discuss whether we have ongoing questions or concerns related to that. So I think all in all, things are going well. We have another meeting on the 8th, and after that, I look forward to reporting to the board any progress, any stalls we've made, or any progress we've made. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board?
I, I will say that with, with, with Upward, they've agreed to meet with legal team once a week, but also then to separately meet with staff for staff concerns. Now, I don't think staff's taken up on that yet, because we're just meeting with legal team and, and Ms. Usher. But if certainly there are other questions that, that staff has regarding issues related to things that come back out of our discussions, they're welcome to also meet with their concerns, you know, concerns that might not have a particular legal tack, but more a question of what is this going to look like for recruitment for retention? What is this going to look like for the, you know, the, the actual housing and locations and things like that? Those are all questions which don't have a particular legal bent, but they have indicated they're, they're willing to, in addition to our rigorous schedule of meeting with, with the attorneys, they're willing to also meet with staff if operations wants to reach out to them.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Chair, I just wanted to make one remark. I'm not sure, I think probably most of the board is aware, but I'm under the impression that Uptown is also working with the Board of County Commissioners and the City of Ocala. And my understanding is the city may be traveling to visit the neighborhood in Texas. So I just kind of wanted to provide that perspective. I do think what a, what a community-positive thing this could be, if between the three major government entities in our community, we are all focusing on prioritizing true affordable housing for our employees. So I just kind of wanted to make that remark, and I think that it is positive, that we don't all generally agree on much, but we seem to agree on this, so that's a positive.
Well, we don't actually agree, because we don't have an agreement. We all agree in, right.
I, I meant, I meant, we all agree that we seem to be moving forward in the direction, and we all find it kind of niche and cool, so.
Yeah, and I, I think that has been something that, that came up, and I, I, that's one of the reasons why I think a number of the questions that we have really come down to, when it comes to the county, when it comes to the city, and it comes to this building, we all sort of like these ideas, but can we count on that assistance in the long term? And counting on that assistance would require something like an inter-local agreement for this particular project. Otherwise, we can just hope. Now, if we're, if we go that direction, that, that's totally fine. I would really like for us to be able to nail down some of these, some of these agreements early on, and that may result in just additional communications with the county and the city, but yeah, it looks like several people are interested. We just want to make sure that they stay interested as, as we have been.
Okay.
I mean-
Thank you for that. Yes.
Mr. Powers is correct. They have, Jason has connected Juan Tenisha Morant with nature director in Texas, and so those conversations are taking place, and Mr. Blackman is participating in those conversations, and so he's representing the questions that we have had.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Is there any public comment on workforce housing? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to meeting reminders. There will be a special school board meeting on September 9 at 5:01 PM to adopt the final budget, and a regular school board meeting at 5:30 PM. There will be a special school board meeting on September 18 at 7:00 AM. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for September 18 at 9:00 AM. There will be a school board meeting on September 23 at 5:30 PM, and there will be a school capital outlay surtax, surtax oversight committee meeting on September 24 at 4:00 PM. And with that, we will move into board comments. Ms. Martinez Young.
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Attorney Powers.
Just to say, I've really appreciated working with a number of individuals over these past couple of weeks. Mr. Blackman and I, of course, continuously work together, and it's, it's, it's been a very good thing. I've also worked closely with Mr. Griffith recently in some contract roles, and it's been very productive, and I look forward to ongoing and positive communication there. It's, it's, I think it will bear fruit. As, as usual, working with Mr. Ayers, we've had a, a lot of discussion recently on some factors, and he's always been great. So it always is a reminder to me that we have some very expert staff with some very unique skills and abilities, and I am honored to be working with them as a team. So thank you very much.
Right. Thank you, Attorney Powers. Dr. Brewer.
Yes, I, I would agree with everything Mr. Powers just said. We have amazing people working, so thank you for those comments. I have a few things for everyone. I want to follow up on just a few things that took place today to make sure that we're bringing you back the correct information. You've asked for the pricing for signage and rebranding for Bridgeway Academy in particular, but really what it costs in general for our school. Also, do we need to add the legislative priorities to our next work session, or we add a closure with that discussion?
I think we got closure on that.
I think we're good.
The only additional conversation I think might need to be our first, let me, let me check the calendar as to when FSBA actually meets to land on those priorities, just in the event that we want to edit them. I believe that's happening in October.
I think, I think, Dr. Campbell, we've already given you clearance to go ahead and do what we need to do.
No, I'm, no, I'm sorry, Reverend Cummings.
Doesn't necessarily come back to us to-
The only, correct. And we're, we're going to be adopting the prior priorities, or at least discussing them, on October 10.
Right.
The only question would be if the board wants to have any additional conversation before we head to Tallahassee to align the wording exactly with the way the FSBA platform is done. But it doesn't have to be a work session agenda item, it can just be something I bring up in a board meeting in October.
Right.
Okay. As long, as long as you are able to bring it up, I would like for you to be able to share with us the FSBA priorities, and then us look at what we have and see if there's any adjustments or alignment that's, that need to be made, so.
And we'll, we'll add it to the next work session topic.
Well, we're just, yeah, the 10-10, the 10, 10-10, you're going, those are going to be approved, so I would say whatever's after that.
October 16 work session, we might be able to, to get, and, and honestly, we're doing this a lot later with FSBA than we normally have, so there may actually, the whole board that are, members of FSBA will have to approve the platform as, as submitted. The advocacy committee will do that. Reverend Cummings is our representative on that, and then the Board of Directors will also have to, to vote on it.
Oh, Madam Chair, is it necessary that we agendize this? Myself and Ms. Campbell will be at that Board of Directors meeting in October. Both of us have to bring back that report about the same thing, so it's not necessary that we agendize it. It could be, those comments could come up either in a board meeting or a work session, so.
Yeah, and I just said, as long as she's still comfortable sharing it. I, it doesn't matter to me if it's an agenda item, I just do want to know that information. So however you're comfortable doing it is good with me.
Okay. That's fine.
All right. Thank you.
So for clarity, no.
Do we need to agendize it? It'll just be a, a board comment whenever we have some additional clarity.
Okay. I have a couple other things. Tonight is our community assessment team meeting at Oak Crest. This is our, this is the opportunity for the community to hear from not only the school, but also to provide input for reasons that they believe the school needs additional assistance, and also to share solutions. And so we're looking forward to that. That meeting's taking place at Oak Crest at 5:30 this evening. Also want to remind you of a couple exciting dates. We had the dedication ceremonies for our two new elementary schools. Winding Oaks is taking place on September the 23rd at 8:30, and Ross Prairie's dedication ceremony is September the 30th, both at 8:30. And then on October the 2nd, we had the centennial event taking place at Osceola Middle School. And you shared some other updates with work sessions, but I want to remind you that the Booster Club, the Booster Stadium conversation is taking place during our work session on September the 18th.
Looking forward to that.
So those are, those are my comments and updates for you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Brewer. All right. Dr. James.
I'm good. Nothing further.
Okay. Reverend Cummings. Okay, Ms. Thoreau.
Just real quick, I was just glancing at the attendance of yesterday, and Oak Crest over 95%, and East Marion over 96%.
Whoa.
Nice.
And all of the, the schools are, are making really good improvements. We're hitting our stride when it comes to attendance, and I know we could all not be happier.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Thoreau. Dr. Campbell.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. And I just have two short things, so we're almost done. One, I just wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Carlisle. We were at a United Way luncheon. He's been in the background working, things that as a board member you don't ever hear. You get invited to the celebration, but we were ranked number four in the community for fundraising and giving, and so Mr. Carlisle's been in the background working and, and helping the community, especially our, our students, our children. So I just wanted to highlight that, because he would never say it. So we wanted to just celebrate him for a minute. And then I also wanted to share that it's time to start mentoring again. We'll start, take stock mentoring begins this week, and so I'm looking forward to that weekly meeting. I didn't get an update yet of if we're in, still in need of some mentors, but I'll be happy to bring that back to you next week, if there is a need in a specific area. So with that, we will adjourn this work session at 11:27.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. There's some people that want to say something.
Oh.
I didn't see them.
I, I don't think that we do that.
Yeah.
I think you may need to.
I think privately, but if our-
Okay. So we're private, we can adjourn, we talk privately.
Okay. So we, we did adjourn at 11:27, but we will then be happy to wait and hear what you have to say.